Hello everybody, Jason Grandin with the Grandin Group Arizona's number one brother and sister real estate team. We are here for another episode of the number one rated and thank you very much for that, number one rated podcast, The Lockbox. And as I mentioned to some of you that are listening to the podcast, you can now check us out on video, just go to the Grandin Group page on YouTube and you can watch it, plus our social media, we link it up. So we're learning the video part. So for those of you that are like, this video is kind of dumb, I'm learning. But thanks for the podcast. We have been rated, um, two months in a row, now three months in a row, sorry, uh, by a couple of the website companies and podcast companies as the number one rated lifestyle and real estate podcast in Arizona. What a fantastic honor. So, um, I don't know about you guys, but we are here at the end, or actually the beginning of summer, the end of the school year is absolutely crazy. The real estate market in Arizona is super, super hot. I'm telling you, I've told you another podcast before, do not wait. Get it together, get a house, ride that rate out for a little while. I personally believe that they're done raising rates and I do think that rates will start coming down. No, we're not going to see the two, three percent again, but we are going to get down again as we go into election year and it's just a great time to buy. Arizona is just a different market. Um, as you guys know, the Grandin Group Arizona's number one brother and sister real estate team, we handle Maricopa County, which is Scottsdale, Phoenix, Chandler, Peoria, stuff like that. And then also Black Canyon City, Flagstaff, Prescott, Sedona, Prescott Valley, Payson. My sister Stacy actually handles our northern division. So let me kick on a little light here for you. I hope that's a little better. So, um, yeah, the real estate market's hot. I just, I don't know what to tell you. People are buying homes, they're wanting to move here. Uh, school is ending this week for a lot of kids. So right now, you're kind of in a transition period where people are like, okay, you know what? Either got to rush to get a home so they can enjoy their summer, or they're going to take their vacation, kick back with the family and then get back here. And after July 4th, it is nuts. Election season, July 4th, we are into it. So with that said, call us up, um, and we're going to, uh, we'll fill you in on tomorrow. We'll tell you about what's going on here. We want to make sure you're taken care of. Sellers, same thing. You know what? It comes down to marketing and there are a lot of Realtors out there that just take your listing, throw it on the MLS and hope it sells. That is not what needs to be done. Marketing is key, getting your top dollar in any market. So today we are, I'm totally excited. I'm just getting ready to leave the house here. Uh, I'm going to change shirts and I'm going to head over. And today we are meeting Adam Quasman, who is running for Scottsdale City Council. Now again, The Lockbox does not talk about politics, but with a big but on this, I do feel it's important that, um, you know, if you're considering moving to Arizona, or if you live here, you have to know the people that want to lead Arizona. You want to know the businesses. You want to know the people and the lifestyle that is Arizona. And so for the past few weeks, the past few podcasts, we've had, um, members of, um, city council come on. And again, we don't really talk about their stance on anything. I want to know why they love Arizona. Why, why would you want to give up a high paying job to run for city council? And you know what? It comes down to lifestyle. So I'm really, really excited about meeting Adam today. Uh, he's a native, grew up in Tucson, so he's seen a lot change. Been down here in the valley, Maricopa County area for the past 10 years, uh, personal injury attorney, actually one of the top ones out here. And, uh, so we're looking forward to meeting him. Listen, make sure you guys get involved. That is one of the great things about living in Arizona is that you do have the opportunity to get involved. Uh, last week's podcast, we met Tammy Caputi, who, uh, is on the city council. She's running for reelection. Again, reach out to her, feel her out and see what she has to say about her stance on stuff and see if it aligns with your family and your lifestyle. Week before, we had Jen DeBakis. She's been here a long time. Great, great lady. Again, reach out to her. These people are all accessible and that's why I bring them to you on the show, The Lockbox. Hey, there is a lot going on for the summer. Yes, it's getting hot, but I'll tell you what, right outside these doors, pools, um, you've got, we do have a water park out here. It's like a wet and wild or something like that. Um, there's a lot to do here in the summer. Plus an hour north, you can go, uh, do these major hikes with waterfalls and stuff. And, uh, hour north, it's cool. Hey, thanks again for watching The Lockbox. Thanks for making us number one. I'm Jason Grandin with the Grandin Group Arizona's number one brother and sister real estate team. Let me change shirts. Let's go down and we're going to go meet Adam. You guys have a good one. Thanks again for listening. Perfect. So like I said, we had a chance to meet, I personally think, one of the top personal injury attorneys out here. Thank you. So everybody, this is Adam Quasman. And so Adam, you're a, um, you're an Arizona native. I am, born and raised. So both of us. Yep, yep. That is great. So you grew down south though, in Tucson. I'm from Tucson, born and raised. So what was, what was it like growing in Tucson? Tucson, the nineties was amazing. I mean, we built the Hubble Space Telescope. Things worked down there. You had a Republican mayor. It was interesting. So Tucson is a very fun place. It's, um, you know, we joke around about, it was, uh, Democrats who, who shot guns and Republicans who smoked weed, right? So it was, everybody got along. It's a different time in the nineties. And you saw the rot of the city start to come in roughly in the late nineties. They didn't want to, they, they didn't want to grow in a way that was residential friendly. They just wanted to be haphazard at it. And, and I watched the city fail and, uh, it really brought me, uh, to terms with how, how you see if a, a, a family can, can, uh, can prosper, families prosper when a city prosper. So growing up on a border town, and that's what Tucson is, for those of you that don't know, Tucson's right there on the border. It's popular too. Everybody loves Tucson. They come up, they're like, hey, we're going down to Tombstone. It's funky. It is. And so, and I remember going down to like Pima Fairgrounds for the horse shows and all that stuff. And remember the Triple T truck stop? Oh yeah. I think it was or something like that. And then anybody who loves the movie Major League, we used to have, um, a lot of, uh, of spring training down there. There's a great air museum, our boneyard of all of our Air Force, uh, fighter jets. So you could go on the F, see the F-14 Tomcats. And there's even a missile silo museum of, of one of the Titan missiles that's there. They took the warhead out of course. But there's just, it was a great place. And also it's outdoorsy. You get to, it's a little bit cooler. Tucson's a little bit cooler than the valley in terms of temperature, um, a little bit rainier than the valley. Uh, but what we say is that it was a, it was a beautiful piece of dirt, but it was unfortunately made ugly by politics, but we could, uh, it can change. Yeah, it could always change. Now it's funny too, people, they, hey, what are you doing this winter? Oh, I'm going to Mount Lemon to go skiing in Tucson. They're like, skiing in Tucson? It's amazing. I went fly fishing. I'm a big fly fisherman. I went fly fishing with a dear friend of mine who, uh, was in town in Tucson, visiting his parents just two weeks ago and got up in the desert and got up to the, to be able to fly fish for trout, caught trout in the mountains at, we have those sky islands. So it's a, it was roughly 5,500 feet above sea level, cooked trout on a, uh, on a, uh, on a grill, the National Forestland Grill, um, and, uh, came home by two o'clock, we're in the pool. No, that's fantastic. That's amazing. That's the thing. That's a great lifestyle that happens in Tucson. And so, and there's a lot going on and it has changed over the years. There are one, my, my, what I think you have to remember is that, is that there's Tucson proper and then there's Pima County, which is really nice. Around, if you get out of this, the actual city, it's like Atlanta, you know, you could go, you could go, there's Atlanta and then there's Buckhead. Right. There's Atlanta and then there's Chambly. There's Atlanta and then there's Alpharetta. You know, you want to get the, the, everything surrounding the actual city, you're going to be able to have a beautiful home, a beautiful lifestyle. And, but I'll tell you what, as soon as I was able to choose my family and where we were going, my wife and I were talking, when we got married, it was Scottsdale. We were here, here, here. And that's, uh, that was, uh, roughly 10 years ago. Well, and so we didn't think twice about it. And that's crazy. So while you were growing up, did you come down to Scottsdale and Maricopa County? We definitely, it wasn't going down, it was coming up. It was coming up on a lot of, for a lot of reasons. It was coming, it was rising in everything because it was, it was, uh, the quality of life here. And it just, Phoenix is, is really where it's at in terms of the valley. And Scottsdale is the jewel of the valley. And I, and I think that, uh, you really see, we have, we have the beauty of Tucson. We have the commerce of, of the best cities in the country and the restaurants, the, the golf and, and I could get into in, in one hour and 15 minutes, I'm fly fishing outside of Payson. Exactly. And if you go an hour north, you're skiing. That's right. That's right. So no, it's perfect. So that, that kind of brings it into the next thing. So you've got a successful law firm and, and you've been involved in politics. Was it in Tucson or was it up here? I represented Northwest Pima County. So I didn't represent Tucson proper, but Northwest Pima County and Western Penal County, all that ranch land between Tucson and Phoenix, I represented. It was, if, if you're heading down to Tucson from Phoenix, everything on your right side of your car was, was all of my district. So that's the whole rural area, basically. City of Maricopa, Casa Grande, um, all the way, all the way down, Arizona City, Alt Morana, but, and then also, but Northwest Pima County, Oro Valley is, it was my, that was really the locus of where we are. There's a Honey Wells there. You have a lot of upper middle class bedroom community families. You have the biggest nut farm in the country. Those pecans. That's right. That's right. Um, and I was elected to the Arizona House of Representatives at the age of 27. Fantastic. I hold a master's in economics. So I served on, as, uh, the vice chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee. That's your taxes. Right. I served on appropriations. That's your spending. I served on commerce. That's your growth. And I served on the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. That's, and that's when, that's risk management for the state. So we, well, and now you decided to, you got a successful law firm. Yes. And now you want to run for city council. That's, well, I've been away from politics for, for a decade. So I was elected in, in, I, I served one term. I ran for Congress afterwards. I did not win, but I won it in life because I met my wife on the campaign trip. All right. God, the big guy said, we're gonna, we're gonna have you run just to meet your wife and then you're out. And then I, uh, I, I started my law firm a few years later and, uh, and it was, um, we've been very successful and four kids now, all under the age of eight. Oh, I know. This is, this is crazy. So, you know, growing up in Scottsdale, you know, grew up on a big horse ranch out here and you, right here where we're at in your office, this is desert. We used to ride our horses. But now Scottsdale's growing and as we get into, again, we don't really go into politics on it, but we do want people to know you're running for city council, to know you. Would you, would you venture to say, you've been all over Scottsdale. So some of the politicians that are running and some of the people running, they think Scottsdale is old town. They think it's just bars and stuff like that. But really, we've got South Scottsdale, which is kind of urban and the more north you go, it becomes more rural. That's right. How, how are you going to run this? How are you going to deal with all the people that, hey, I want high rises. I want this. No, I want horse property. How are you going to deal with that? I, I come from a family first approach. Uh, Scottsdale is for families. And for me, I just think about what's great for my family. I love open spaces. I love parks. I have, I have, there's six people in my family. I'm not, I'm not thinking multifamily housing, although I understand it. Right. But, but we really need to focus on family, single family homes and making sure that neighborhoods are, are coalescing with one another. And that means creating that fabric that, and to build deep roots. Right. You have more and more apartment complexes, you're going to have fewer roots. And listen, I lived in an apartment complex when I was young, but I think Tempe is good for, for a place like, there's other places in the valley, valley for that. You know, uh, my mother-in-law lives in a condo. I understand that. She's, she's a single, thank God she lives about 10 minutes from my, from my house because she is the emergency babysitter. She's taking my son to chess class tonight. So she was the emergency call. But you know, for me, housing and single family homes is really has to be the focus. And when you're developing a city like Scottsdale, you have to really look at it on a case by case approach. Right. So if there is going to be some multi, multifamily housing, it has to fit within the rubric and schematics of how does this make our neighborhood better? Is traffic going to be, uh, something that's going to be a concern because of project A? Or is public safety going to be a concern because of project A? So when I think about it, I say, is this better for my kids? Is it going to be better for the future? And will Scottsdale, uh, have deeper roots? And you know, cactus roots, saguaro cactus roots. They are, they are strong, right? And they're, and you want to be, you want to have those roots be strong for, for the long run. Well, it's a privilege to live in Scottsdale. And I've always thought, you know what? It's not for everybody. You can't, you can't just come in here and say, hey, I want to live in Scottsdale. You gotta, you gotta work hard to get here. It's okay. You're going to have to give up affordability at some point for, uh, for the quality that, that you want. If you're planning a city in that direction. Uh, like I said, the valley is, is large and it's, but it's not uniform. It's okay that there's certain areas that are for up and coming uh, families. It's okay that there's certain areas that are for, um, young businessmen and businesswomen or students. I'm, I'm all for different walks of life for different people. When I was in the legislature, my job was to build out Arizona for everybody. Right. It's okay that Scottsdale is Scottsdale. And when my friends on the East Coast, they say they want to visit Scottsdale, what, what, they're coming for the golf courses, they're coming for the resorts, the steak houses, they're coming for the music, the live events. You know, we have, we have the, uh, the Arabian Horse Show, Barrett Jackson, uh, the Waste Management Open, Spring Training. They want something out of Scottsdale and they're going to provide it. That's exactly. And they don't want to come here and see New York or Chicago. They want to see Arizona. That's right. So do you think Scottsdale, which by the way, it's the slogan, it's still west, most western town. That's right. How as a council member, do you keep that while still growing? Right. See, the new west is the way to think about it. And, and the trick is navigating the new west. So it doesn't turn into places that, I, I think that there's a, that there's a problem in places like Denver and even, and Reno and of course San Francisco, it's the easy one. Where these are western towns that lost their culture. They're, they're, the crime is out of control. Homelessness is out of control. And, and you just see development popping up left and right without any focus. So again, keep your boots on when you're in Scottsdale. You gotta keep, you gotta have a suit. Yeah, you got a suit with the boots, but you're gonna have, you're gonna look good, right? They're gonna look good. So that means, that means making sure in terms of our cultural heritage that we keep old town alive in the right way, that we keep that cultural heritage as part of it, whether it's the rodeo museum, or whether it's, um, it's making sure that, uh, that our, um, our, our, our horse shows are taking, keep that culture, keep the biting culture alive. Right. You know, and, uh, but when it comes to, it's, it's okay to, to want to have fancy restaurants around too. Absolutely. And I'll tell you, it's kind of cool watching a cowboy pull up in brand new Ferrari in Scottsdale. That's the new flavor of Scottsdale. That's the new west. And that's what we're going, Scottsdale has always been the jewel of the new west and we are, and we are going to continue that moving forward. All it takes is the right type of leadership. No, absolutely. So you decide to get into city council, which by the way, nobody gets rich sitting on city council. Nope. At least they're not supposed to, right? So we've got a lot, Scottsdale, as many of you listeners already know, we got a lot of people that are snowbirds, second homes here. So how do you take into consideration the guy like me, full-time Scottsdale compared to the neighbor who is here from January through May? Right. And, and they have just as much vote as I do. So how do you juggle that? Well, I think for the, for those people, and my mother-in-law is one of those people. So again, every answer that I'm going to tell you has to do with family. And we're going to go family first. So I'm going to use an anecdote. I, I, I'm an Orthodox Jew. I know rabbis talking stories, right? So I'm going to always talk and let me tell you a story. Um, my, my mother-in-law is going to be in Israel for the summer and helping out with the effort there. And her primary concern, public safety. Right. Safety, is her house going to be broken into? Is her car going to be broken into? What's going to happen to her, to hurt the value of her condo? What's going to happen to the quality of her community when she's gone? And are her possessions going to be in place? You know, public safety is something that we absolutely need to hone in on. Uh, it comes more than just fully funding the police, which I absolutely believe in, fully funding the fire, fully funding police, but it has to do with an attitude of gratitude toward the blue. And backing the blue means, uh, we're, we're building a community where you see a cop, you say thank you. Right. You, um, you approach the police not as an adversary, but as somebody that's the key factor in the community. So that when they're walking the streets, they're walking not only for, for us, they're walking for themselves too. And I think that unfortunately, in many places in this country, and I hate to again, bag on San Francisco, it's such an easy target. Whether it's San Francisco or Denver, they, you've seen a cultural shift away from supporting our public safety officers. Uh, Scottsdale's, it's not going to happen in Arizona. In fact, and what Adam's probably not telling everybody is cops don't drive around necessarily, and they are awesome out here. They don't drive around in the cars. They're on horses downtown. They're on bikes. That's right. And they're some of the best guys. That's right. I mean, they'll sit and take pictures with you. Every time we see them, I know they get my kids. Stickers for the kids. Oh yeah. Oh yeah. So they've been really great. And they played a part. Now I wish they didn't have to wear all that dark, heavy stuff in the middle of summer. But so be it. So no, this is, this is great. So why, what's your passion about being in city council? Obviously it's given you a chance to make a difference for Scottsdale or maybe keep things the same. Well, I think certain things we're doing great. Uh, we have some of the, the best open spaces and parks out of any community. Again, Scottsdale is for families. So we have, whether it's our McCormick Stillman Railroad Park, that's outstanding where it has, it not only has train rides for the kiddos, but it has for adults, you know, moms and dads can see the trains that presidents used to ride on when they used to ride around the country and as an exhibit. But, and then also of course our McDowell Mountain Preserve. It's just incredible. Incredible. And so we have, we have that going for us. We need to make sure that's all perfect and taken care of and kept pristine. But you know, for the future, one of the reasons why I ran is because again, I hold, my economic mind has to make sure that we're running efficiently and smoothly as, as humanly possible while this, while Scottsdale grows. And it's a very precarious situation. Whether it's a business, you know, I'm, I'm an attorney, but I own a law firm. So growth is something that's, it's almost as scary as, as your failure in your first step. If you don't grow right, you're finished. Right. And so growth mistakes can happen in two ways. One, again, we're just a hodgepodge, grow however you can, wherever you can and, and splatter paint wherever you are. And it ends up, unfortunately, you lose that cohesiveness of the culture that's, that makes Scottsdale special. So we want to be very, very, very thoughtful in how, in how we're going to develop and how we're going to grow as a community. That's one. Number two is our budgeting. I'm not going to turn this into a high tax area. I'm not going to turn this into, into an area where, where, um, your property taxes, your sales taxes are going to get out of control like the big cities have, have, uh, become. So Scottsdale has hundreds of thousands of residents. We're going to make sure that it's going to continue to be a, a, a cost of living that's manageable for those who are successful and those, and those families who have been here for a long time to, so that they don't ever feel priced out. Right. Right. And so, and the other thing too, to get people involved, all these different projects have committees that are non-elected. That's right. And so, I mean, don't you think that's probably a good way for people to get involved? I love having the citizen engagement in our community. I think it's so powerful and so productive. Um, there's, I will take, I will take citizen engagement every day over bureaucratic dick tots, you know? And so we're, we're going to do, we, we really have a government of the people and we want to support that. And the council, oh, you know, I don't care what office you're seeking, whether it's the White House to the dog catcher. You always have to have that servant's heart. And a servant's heart means you wake up every day, not doing what's best for the people, but representing the best of the people and fighting for them. Well, and you're open-minded too, especially as an attorney. That's right. You probably look at all different angles. You have to. You have to. You have to. And, and Arizona, culturally, you know, we are the Goldwater State. You know, I'm, one of my endorsements is Barry Goldwater Jr. Yep. And it's, and he looks just like his dad. And, and having that mentality is, is you buck trends. There's no sacred cows. We, we do what's right. And Arizona, and Arizona values means Arizona solutions. No, absolutely. So based on what you know about city government and all that, what do you see as a top priority when you get in the, when you get elected for the city? What? I mean, is it, is it water? Is it housing? Is it businesses? By the way, we got a ton of places that are getting taken down and revamped. I know they're putting Whole Foods in downtown Scottsdale, which is great. I mean, so my three priorities are public safety, making sure that Scottsdale is safe. That is, that is first and foremost. If you don't have a safe city, all the rest goes by the wayside. Number two for me is developing in the right way, making sure that it's a family first development process, not hodgepodge at the wall like we talked about. And then the third thing is getting right into that budget and seeing if there's any structural changes that we can make and reforms that we can make to make sure that we are keeping taxes low, the regulatory burdens low and keeping, letting businesses like mine who want to come up in Scottsdale, let them flourish because the small businessman is the backbone of any economy. No, 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 absolutely. And, and we do need growth for sure. The, uh, and the public safety is huge. I mean, the cops are down here are great. So with that said, what do you and your family like to do for fun? Scottsdale's got so much stuff. That's right. What do you guys like to do for fun? You know, I, I have to say, my Jewish community in Scottsdale, it's one of the, Scottsdale is the largest Jewish community in the west. It is. And they're fan. In the southwest. The southwest. Not California, of course, but the southwest. The community, Jewish community out here is, is incredible. The schools are some of the best schools around too. In fact, we were talking about yesterday, we have people that are non-Jewish sending their kids to Jewish schools because the education. It's fantastic. I actually came in and taught a little bit today at an elementary school, my son's elementary school. I taught three classes in conservation and about, and about management of animals and making sure that to not do things like they did with the buffalo, make sure that we have a interrelation, uh, a strong interrelationship between our game and fish department. You know, Arizona, you'll never expect this. It has 400 miles of crystal clear trout streams. And outside of Scottsdale, and you could get within an hour and a half, you're at 5,000 feet and within two hours, you could be upwards of 9,000 feet above sea level. It's like the Colorado wilderness, which means we have elk, turkey, ducks, uh, deer species, wolves. It is bears, black bears, uh, mountain lion. You try to avoid those. But it is gorgeous. And so our, uh, being outdoorsy is very much a part of my family. And again, we fly fish. So I have my children on a little, it's a fly rod, call it a tencara rod. There's no reel. It's just a rod and a line. Right. And so they're catching trout and then, and then I come home and have some, have our trout fry. Uh, we are fish and chips. So that's what we do. We go out, we go out there and we explore our beautiful state. No, that, that's fantastic. And this, this is a great, I mean, I've grew up in Scottsdale. So it's a great place. I mean, I've seen it change. When you came down from Tucson, you saw it, how much it's changed. Yep. Where do you see Scottsdale in the next 10 years? Well, it depends on who gets elected. I, I don't mean to be blatantly political there, but I think that there's a big difference. You know, that is, that is a hundred percent true. Leadership matters. Right. And I think that it's looking like we're going to win this election. It's looking very strong. We're raising a lot of money, getting a tremendous amount of support and endorsements. But the, um, the, if, if the leadership that we, that, that I believe I could bring to the table occurs, Scottsdale will be on smooth sailing of a balanced growth that's family friendly and great for business and that maintains Scottsdale's special nature. Where if you're, again, you're on the East Coast and you're saying, I can't do this winter anymore, or I can't do this big government taxation anymore. Come on out. Come on out here. We're gonna, we're gonna make it a great place for you, um, as long as you adopt those Arizona values and make sure that, that you are all in on, uh, on the Arizona way, which is, which is, uh, that rugged western thought of, of everybody's your friend, but we're going to make sure that we do it our way and not, and not be told how to live our lives. No, 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 absolutely. And for those that are listening to this, that come down to Scottsdale, the parade, for example, the Paradis del Sol Parade. Paradis del Sol. 50,000 people down Scottsdale Road. Incredible. It's packed. And you're bringing in the old history. And you're bringing in, you go to the rodeo grounds and you can, and you're, you know, I love it. The equestrian history is great. Um, I am a, uh, I, I love professional bullfighting. I follow the circuit actually. I think it's fun. Yeah. Um, my, my five year old is going to be the mutton buster. My daughter Sari, she is tough as nails. My son doesn't want anything to do with it, but I see my daughter going and they have the little sheep that they, that they put him on. And so hopefully one day she'll be in there herself. Well, this is funny, kind of growing up like that too. The mutton busting is where you ride the sheep. So it's the greatest thing. If you guys haven't seen it. But when we were growing up, which, you know, I'm only 20 years old. Okay. So when we were growing up, the cowgirls, eh, they weren't that good today. The cowboy and cowgirls are like top notch models. Tough as nails. Yeah. And they're, and they're strong. And I'll tell you what, that, that plays into this whole thing. Kids that are raised around animals have a totally different attitude than the ones that are sitting on the iPads. That's right. And you can't, you can't get away from, you could, you actually, you could be stuck at home in Arizona, but, but again, you hone that culture out here and we push it. You can't be the westmost western town inside. You gotta be outside. You gotta be out there and learning about it. You definitely have to be out there. And there's no reason not to get up early and go hiking. That's right. It's funny because, um, people will come to town, they've never been here and they'll see a rattlesnake on the trail and they'll get their iPhone and they'll go down and be like, look at this. And then they get bit. That's a mistake. It's a mistake. But we had rain today. It was incredible. Rain this morning. And so, um, it is, it really is a very special place. And we have a, so we're going to have, we have great weather. Again, we just had spring training here and it was fantastic place to be outside. And people come, come from far and wide. And we're going to continue just to make the best of Scottsdale, continue only better. And we're going to fix anything that, that might need to be tweaked a little bit to make sure that, uh, it's forever. Well, and as you're getting on the city council here, uh, first of all, how can people get to you? And I do recommend call up Adam, call the other, everybody running, you have to interview these people. That's right. Call Adam. He'll answer any question you want. But how do they reach out to you and donate? Yep. My name is Adam Quasman. It's a tough name. K W A S M A N. I made it tough so you could remember it on the ballot. We did that on purpose. Um, but, uh, it's adamquasman.com and my law firm is Quasman Law. If God forbid, anybody's injured in an accident, you know, there's, there, you know, give us a call. We do have a lot of traffic in Scottsdale. We do. We do have a lot of traffic, but we're going to make sure that, uh, that we don't narrow streets on purpose. We're going to make sure that we have a, uh, that, that there are some plans on road diets, which are limiting lanes. We want to get rid of all that nonsense and make sure that our, that it is a driving city, but we want a driving city to be accessible. Because again, back to families, any moment you're sitting in traffic is a moment you can't be with your family grilling outside steaks. That's it. Swimming and everything else. So somebody wants to donate to you? They go to your website. adamquasman.com. adamkwasman.com. Uh, anything, anything, whether it's, whether it's $5, $20, $6,650. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna raise about another 50,000 to uh, before this, before this primary is over. And we've had some great support from everywhere and, and average donation is somewhere in the 75 to a hundred dollar range. So it's great. Yep.
No, that's great. Yeah, Scottsdale, I mean, growing up in Scottsdale, we're really happy with it. In fact, I got a couple of people emailing. They're like, how come you keep interviewing Scottsdale people? Well, yes, we handle the state, but grew up in Scottsdale. So I love Scottsdale. I love seeing where it's going.
All four of my kids were born on, at, at Honor Health on Scott, on Shea right there. And it, you know, I, I tell everybody, I've been here for a decade, but I got here as quick as I could.
Exactly. Exactly.
And I'm not going anywhere else. This is our home.
No, well, we appreciate coming on the show. The Lockbox Arizona's number one brother and sister real estate team. Now, before we go, I'm gonna put you on the spot here real quick. Your favorite place to grab a steak in Scottsdale. Now alone, there's over 55 places in Scottsdale alone to grab a steak.
Mm-hmm.
Anywhere from Dairy Queen all the way up, I guess. What's your favorite place?
So I, I eat at kosher restaurants. Fata Morgana. Fata Morgana is.
Fantastic.
It's outstanding. It is so good of an Israeli restaurant that, that Israelis eat there. That's when you know you want to follow, follow the shoe there, you know?
Yep.
So, so I, whenever we need a steak, you know, there's only a couple kosher restaurants. Kitchen 18 is outstanding. Fata Morgana is outstanding. They're across the street from each other, but they're not in, they're not, they're non-competition. So I will eat both at Fata or at, or at Kitchen 18 and uh, share it with my beautiful Jewish community.
Scottsdale has some great kosher delis.
It does. It does. There's great food and uh, and um, uh, my wife still makes the best, uh, the best challah bread.
Oh, does she?
For Sabbath.
Hey, so my mom, my mom actually makes the best matzoh ball soup.
Oh, it's odd.
It, it is odd. In fact, my wife, she is not Jewish and my mom made her matzoh ball soup and she eats just a ton. She loves it.
It's amazing. It's, you know, it's, it's uh, it's Jewish penicillin. That thing is cured to the common cold right there.
That's exactly it. Well, Adam, again, how can people reach out to you?
adamkwasman.com. That's A D A M K W A S M A N dot com.
All right, everybody. Another episode of The Lockbox brought to you by the Grandin Group Arizona's number one brother and sister real estate team. Is in the bag. We're here with Adam. Make sure you call him, reach out to him, interview him. And listen, ask the tough questions, cause I don't think he's gonna shy away from it. And Adam, thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We'll see you guys next episode.